Town Council meeting, town of Clinton, Louisiana, Patrick Eastley County, State of Louisiana, 11209 Main Street, Clinton, Louisiana. Tuesday, September 12, 2017, 6:00 PM. The invocation will be given by Chief Fred Dunn and the pledge of allegiance will be recited in unison. Will you please stand?
Let us bow our heads, Father God, we come before you and act as we conduct, Father God, the town Clinton Business Meeting, Father God. Father God, we ask that everything be done decently and all, Father God. Let everyone, Father God, express their concerns, Father God, as is truly, Father God, makes the town grow, Father God. We thank you, Father God, for the mayor, Father God, and for the aldermen, Father God. But most importantly, Father God, we thank you for the citizens of the town, Father God. For through them and with them that we grow, Father God. We thank you, Father God, for everything that you have done, Father God. We lift up Texas and Florida before you, Father God, as they prepare to recover from the storm, Father God. Give them grace and mercy, Father God, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice for all.
Go, Paul. Paul, you're here?
Here.
Paul, you want to go on the way? I think the record will put this on, who is that? Alderman Kemp?
Here.
Alderman Matthews? Let the record also reflect that it was the Matthews, it's not you. Alderman Young?
Here.
Police Chief, Roger Dunn?
Here.
Town Councilor Tim Butler?
Here.
Town Attorney Charles Brooks?
Here.
Fire Chief, W. Z.
Here.
Okay, this time of day any changes or additions to the agenda?
I'm here to add some things to the agenda. One is to address the status of the annual audit. I think it's due sometimes this month or whatever. And clogged drains on the state highway. And then also the town property that needs to be cleaned up. And also to add, in the section of old business, the status on the public meeting with the DOTD and Representative Katie Havert, I don't know if you've been able to be along with that.
Wait, move this for a moment, Jim.
It has been motion by Alderman Johnny Beecham that those items be added to the agenda. I will vote each, Alderman individually, for additions to the agenda and has to be unanimous. Alderman Johnny Beecham?
Yes.
Alderman Mark Kemp?
Yes.
Alderman Cam Young?
Yes.
Okay, those items will be added to the agenda. Do I have a second? Next item on the agenda, disposition of the minutes from our previous meeting, the votes, eight, 2017. Alderman's going to motion for those minutes?
I may have that way.
It has been motion by Alderman Mark Kemp, do I have a second? Second by Alderman Johnny Beecham, are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? I say that the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda, certificate of occupancy. Mr. and Mrs. James Bond, he can approach the podium at his side.
Hey, how you doing? We looking to buy some property on the corner of Highway 10 and Tulsa Street. We'd like to build a house there. We have a house planned and a lot now.
Is that right next door to the city?
Yes, D L, that's right.
I don't understand why they're coming here because when Cindy Bunch came, she had gotten her permits for water and all this. And it was sad that that mean that she didn't need any portions of equipment. Now, what I get?
He said, "Jeez, they were asking home."
Sharon had said they, they were talking to Sharon, and Sharon had said they didn't have an X or Y. But didn't they, but didn't y'all determine that they didn't need? So I don't understand why Mr. and Mrs. Bond hadn't take time out to come.
Let the record reflect that it's Alderman Matthews. Okay, with that said, Mr. and Mrs. Bond, there is no need to apologize for your coming, but go ahead and do your part.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to the town. Okay.
If you need us, just stop.
Water. No, we haven't done this one.
Let's come back here.
We haven't rented the property yet, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you got the, you're free to do it, but from?
There's a free office.
Okay, that's. The next item on the agenda, special event permit, Mr. Sean Dunn, in manner catering. You can approach him over here at this time.
Hello.
Hello.
This is my second time coming. I was given the chance in like two months, two months ago, to start a cafe, catering cafe, in which I was, I had, on that agenda, I was, came up to do, I had put on that for a class R. Well, I'm, I'm just like, private, you know, I'm not trying to do nothing totally diffuse, but with the class R, there's a lot of different things that I need reading to or whatever. But for us having a party or something like that, I want to be able to, like I say, possibly serve alcohol there at a court. It's like catering, where somebody have a party or something like that. And that's the only reason I have it for. I don't need it for every day because I'm going to cafe cooking and catering and sandwiches and party foods. So I'm asking for a special events, when I talk to ATC, I'm asking for a special events. So it'll be, that's just a three-day pass. And if I have something that I be covering legally, so I won't be serving and mess up my regular business because I'm having kids in there as well in the daytime. And if it's not served in the daytime, it'll only be for parties. So a three-day pass would allow me to do that. And after that, then I won't have to do it. If I want to have something, I just have to come get permission from the, what I have to do is come to get permission from the town, from the mayor, she said, permission from my landlord, and it's a hundred dollar fee. So that's all I'm planning on, and I'm not trying to get a class A, I'm not trying to get a class R, just, just for when I have a party or something, just to be covered to have alcohol in the, in the building, with, with business I'm doing.
You gonna sell it?
No, it's for like parties and.
I know, but you gonna sell that, I already gonna bring it on.
It's gonna be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy it, like if somebody have a party, it is gonna happen and I'm serving. Like if I have a birthday party, somebody come to my birthday.
So you bring it on then, but you ain't sell it.
So that be a part of your catering package?
Yes. But they said I have to have special events, that's what ATC told me that I have.
And every time that you have a party or an event?
It's only like three days, it's only three days a week I will do it. And it's like a Friday maybe, a Friday, or every other weekend, because I work at the hospital as well. So I'm not working on every other weekend.
But you'll have to pay a hundred dollars for each event that you, and I might pay that too.
Um, I paid.
What about the NBC, or were they?
She just said it's a hundred dollars, I don't know if it goes to the town, I don't know.
It goes to the town, all the other stuff that you had done with Sharon, after you did, and all that, we have done it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to have it with some class?
It would, but if I have the class A general, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't, like Mr. Dunn told me the last time, I wouldn't have the kids in it all. And like I say, I want to, in the daytime when the kids get out of school, I have kids, middle school, high school kids. They can come in, I want to have computers set up where they can come in and get all the computers and homework and stuff. And if I be the class A general, I would never be a captain.
So you're comfortable with what you're doing?
Yes.
So you're, so you're not, you're not gonna, my town's alcohol there, it's just, you have to bring any.
No, yeah.
So the kids of their alcohol is not.
And then when I had events, the kids, like my manager, she wanted the kids, not me, at all. She, she just, she gonna have a special event, because that's what she getting the license through ATC is gonna be special event. She just gonna have to specify to the town when she call, when it's gonna be, what day it's gonna be.
So the town will give her, use some certificate or?
No. Well, they told, she, the lady at ATC told me that I just come here, get the okay from, from here, okay from Ms. Wilson, and I just bring, go down, come down there and, and I can do it in one day.
How your opinion, if you receive?
So say, for example, if you decide to do something, it's October 10th, you will just come here to the town hall, say you have a special event, and get permission here, and you just, okay.
And then just go down to the board and down, just be aware, you can't do that on Sundays, not with alcohol.
Friday, Saturday, any other day.
That would Friday, Saturday, but not on Sunday.
Sir.
I was, I was saying, I thought they could sell stuff at the 12 o'clock.
But you're not selling, you're not selling a special event.
Special events.
But you're gonna, okay, you're gonna have a special event on Sunday?
You can have it, but you can't do the alcohol.
You can have it on Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, so I, I guess what we need to do is to just put it in the minutes or reflect that you were here and that we know that you've come up from time to time, you will get a permit to have a special event and, or. Yeah, yeah, let me get a motion. It has been motion by Alderman Johnny Beecham. Second by Alderman Tim Young, that Ms. Dunn will get the permit, the special event and computer out, sir.
It's gonna be another seven on that, because she's bought, I don't know that establish.
Second by Alderman Kemp, that Ms. Dunn will, you know, be given the permit to have a special event, she will come here, make the pitch of the town. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
You can't vote.
Okay.
I was having, let the record show that Ms. Young abstained. Ms. Dunn.
Thank you.
You're good.
Yeah, we're good.
Bless your daughter. Okay, is Ms. Jones here for the library? Okay, Ms. Jones is not here. It was at the first Saturday, New York Market Day, they did have, we get over there, I went over, met her, and she showed me around throughout the living room services that they have at the library. So I'm just gonna say to the citizens here, go out and support what they're doing over there.
You said new rooms?
That's a new room, you say, done up like a meeting room over there, they have made.
They have room for rooms?
She actually took me to her room, yeah, that's a computer setup, ma'am.
Didn't they take over the office and?
Yes, yes, that's another office that they have.
Oh, okay. Another new library with rooms.
Yes, ma'am.
Could I just, she's not here, mention the tax.
You sure can, daughter, yes ma'am.
Please remember the renewal of the tax, that's October, what is the?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, October the fourteenth, because that's very important.
Yes, yes.
After the mishap last time, when people did not understand and thought it was a new tax, so please spread the word.
But then of course, I didn't have permission to let.
She's been married.
Yes, Ms.. They will be. Ms. Faith Havert.
She's coming to speak at the Chamber today.
At the Chamber?
And there will be a special booth set up at the Wildlife Festival. The library is setting up a booth that day and will be there with various activities.
Are they gonna do both papers, Carolyn, that, the front paper?
Yes. And they've done flyers, they're doing a thousand signs in parish, one in town parish, but still word is to be out.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, Ms. Bianca Rogers, if you can come to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a teacher at East Leachiana High, I'm also the coordinator of the homecoming, this is coming up on October 20th. And I'm here requesting, asking for your permission to have this year's homecoming parade in the town of Clinton. With the startup would be at East Leachiana Middle School. And usually they'll make a, uh, they'll make, they'll turn it off on East Leachiana Drive and make a right on South Street, come all the way down South Street, and now full circle around the courthouse for like a U, and make a left on Highway 10 and right on Church Street and straight back to Middle School. So I'm just here asking for your permission to everybody to give this year's parade a try. What time? Eleven o'clock. Also, I only make one copy, but I don't know if they give it to me, this is the parade packet. It is the time and date and for registration.
You, you will give it to the chief because as far as the parade route, chief, if they'll pay you.
Now, in the past, they've had issues about fees and all that kind of stuff, is everybody on board with this?
What's, what's gonna happen, religious parades, we wait for fees, but what is coming down? So we got all this, that all food off gonna have to come off. So by the start of the time, next year, that's when we gonna reinstall the fees. By this year, we just go ahead and wait because it's the start of the time.
I'll take your, everybody's side.
Oh, they will be.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give you a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the, for the East Leachiana High School homecoming parade, that's second.
It has been motion by Alderman Cam Young. Second, by Alderman Mark Kemp, East Leachiana High School, we have the parade here in the town of Clinton to commence on October 20th, starting on November 10th. Are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Anybody say any opposition? I say that the motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, Mrs. Pauline Roberts, homecoming parade, this gentleman?
Y'all did it. So we submitted our parade route, and I believe you have it in front of you. We would, on October 13th, Friday 13th, leave Silliman, proceed north on Bank Street, turn right on St. Helena, circle the courthouse square, proceed east on St. Helena Street to Church Street, then south on Church Street to Silliman Street, then west on Silliman Street to Bank Street. Is that right? Then south on Bank Street. Chief, that's cool.
And their fees are the right to?
Their fees, they're way, the only thing up deals. You know, I have nothing to do in reference to Ms. Roberts, but we have tried this the last two years. Circling the courthouse, it was gonna be a problem, the parade always running to each other. The entries always running to each other, so what we did the last two years, we said, wherever your dance team gonna be at, because they want to dance in front of everybody. We said, wherever your dance team at, those can circle twice, but the whole parade can't.
Does y'all parade that big?
Um, I think it's, and on occasion, we've had people, you know, like, let's say it's election time, and when people ride in the parade, it makes it a little bit longer. We have backed up before on those occasions. One, one possible alternative to that was if the floats, there's a seventh through 12th grade, each grade has a float, and those are longer, and maybe those could not circle the town, the square. Let them have one pass by, and the rest of the parade may be circle, would that be acceptable?
We tried that last year, and this is where the mishap came in. Once your parade leaves Silliman, it's like nobody have control over who's supposed to do what. What y'all had last year, you had, y'all specified to us who's supposed to go around, they had a number, we blocked them. But the ones that were on spoke around once, was going around the backside, coming back in and back to the parade.
Could an officer kind of direct them?
Yeah, we could direct them, but we got to have somebody from Silliman also, see, they were supposed to give me a contact person that is you.
And Pauline Kemp. You have one, is that you?
Contact person, I'm the student council sponsor and, you know, in charge of kind of organizing and all that, help come in festivities. So, do I need to be on that corner? I would be on that corner if I need to. We, they allow us to use the bank, and I try to, you know, they play music, and we have a master ceremony that announces the floats and such, and I try to be up there if there's problems with the system, you know, the P S.
What about a, a teacher, a male teacher?
I can get, I can request and, you know.
Because they have to be.
Let it be known that I was asked to put an official from the school on that corner to keep the floats from actually turning and going around.
Do you have a?
I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Years ago, when I was doing the parade, to keep the, from looping back on itself, we would come up Bank Street, take a right on Jackson Street, the one that goes in front of the old fire department? And take a, and take a left at the fire department. When you get to the clerk of courts corner, you go left. And then when you go all the way around, when you get back to the clerk of courts office, you take another left, so you have the traffic going like this.
Instead of trying to cross that on the path.
And you only go around the courthouse one time, but, but the.
You do it once, because you don't want to go around.
But you know, when we were marching years ago, long time ago, we did have problems like that. And we were, went around the courthouse twice.
Well, they have probably sixty or so entries.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they, they had a lot of entries last year.
Oh, I haven't not heard of parade.
I would recall, this one, I was just, we went around twice, but it wasn't quite that big.
Well, the problem is it'll loop back on itself, if you judge where I said it, you're not looping.
I'm happy y'all think it's happened, and just as I said.
That's what I was, I was getting rid of the week before, I mean, they can do it, they just have to give me a plan of what it's gonna be. Because when they did that last year, they say we got five that's gonna go twice. Yeah, they told us that, and we was expecting five, and we had that parade, it was like twenty-five times we were around.
Is that the cars for the girls?
My total number in the breaks on the parade lineup from my previous year was twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yeah. Now, some, like I said, five are, those are floats, you know.
Yeah, well, I was thinking entries, you know, you got cars, is that cars too?
That's including the cars now, I have various police agencies listed here, so that might be the sheriff, the town, you know, DA, yeah, right. So.
So maybe you're up to thirty-five, but it's still probably more than the.
We do back up there, and I will say that that parade is like a monster. It just kind of takes it a life of its own when it leaps that, I'll just say it does itself. But if we, we could possibly change the parade route, as you suggested, or have an official that sends the floats. It's like the floats are what, you know.
Maybe even get your couple guys, I don't know, how many male figures you have up there? Not really.
We have, they have figures like.
I would put the, the agenda down, but you know, sometimes they listen to a male better first, but. But either whatever.
Yeah.
See, if you change the route the way we teach, we looked at this route several different ways, and like Mr. Beecham said, because see, either way it goes, there's certain ones want to go around twice. Even if you go the route he gone, they still gonna run into each other.
Yeah, but you gonna have one go straight back up there, straight back up.
Oh, well, she can, she can go the way she, our route trying to go. But the only thing up deals, see, if the ones that's supposed to go the second time to dance, last year we was supposed to save them on, on Liberty Street under Woodville. While others going out, they didn't even come around to dance. But what they was doing, what they did there, they was going around, you had others coming on the backside, getting on the back of it, trying to jump in.
Now, with all the construction that's going on downtown, is that a problem?
I'm shutting down all traffic.
Well, I know, I'm just complaining of the construction group.
We all have the thing up that they can't be out there.
Well, Miss Roberts, what I do, I tell you, if you, parade will be descended.
Okay, and we'll do either at the round, or we'll have the official keeping the actual parade floats from circling?
And have the people that you gonna have designated to be on that different corners, so we can all meet together.
Okay.
We'll all be on.
Okay.
One thing you might consider is, for those people who are pulling the floats, they have an instruction sheet.
Uh, they do have an instruction sheet, whether they choose to use it or not, it's the, you know. Believe me, I have told them, you are driving this floats, don't go around this courthouse, there they go, so, yeah.
Well, I can understand the girls wanting to go around twice because they have money that they spend with dresses and all that now.
Yeah, and, and that's not a problem for the, you know, the other portions of parade that floats to kind of sometimes back up. And we have had in the past, when we had officials, you know, from the school, they were able to stack them, you know, in layers, but that's, that's kind of an organizational challenge in the, even the moment of the parade.
We stack.
We leave Silliman at ten fifteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Right. I'm.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we're gonna ask a question. Of the parades in general, I am, my name's Annette Lee Roberts, you see, I'm beautiful, and the mess after parade is a big problem. And I just wonder, I know she's, they throw candy, it's those beads that are a problem. Is, what is, is there anything in place to clean that up, like, we've been an hour, because last year I went, picked up stuff for hours along the streets. Well, we had to, too, in front of the shop, it was pretty, it was a lot.
So the rest of the party you have.
I know it's a party problem right there, not down the street.
What about the responsibility goes to children themselves, to students? Is there some responsibility for students for picking up afterwards, is that?
Make them work.
My one thing that y'all might consider doing is talking to Sheriff Travis to see if he could give any of their residents.
Right.
To come out and do a quick cleanup.
So is that what's done by the other schools?
Oh, I don't know.
And other banks, like that.
I don't know. But mostly didn't know they ever get a share of that.
What is your thing?
Yeah, those have clean sweep.
The market operation, they have.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
And then, but I don't know about Clinton Ask, and sort of they done.
They will have one, trust me.
But did y'all tell them that?
They know, they have one last year.
Oh, did they? What are they from?
You know, the clips. The last year, exactly, we reported they had eighty-two brooms.
Whenever the parade, East Leachiana, on this side, everybody's, why is it from?
A lot.
Why is it sitting this clean on the head?
First year, we had a hundred and forty.
Everybody come, yes, ma'am. Well, the clean sweep basically cleans the street, but everything is in the grass and the digits, so that's my.
Well, that's why I was saying, maybe, maybe some of the residents at the jail, lump release, will come out, and maybe they can try to pick up.
Might want to write a letter to Ward and Sanders, and he probably provide, be providing in the church. Pass out the body, see why he can do the pickup truck.
So, Sheriff? Travis.
Travis.
Or Ward and Sandy Sanders?
Okay, all right. Okay, at this time, that's it, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
At this time, I need to give a motion that I will send for the festival parade.
Amen.
It's been moved by Alderman Mark Kemp, second by Alderman Johnny Beecham. It's been moved by Alton Mark Kemp, second by Alvin James Future. That's the parade will take place on October thirteenth, beginning at ten eighteen.
We leave the store at about ten fifteen.
Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
Alvin, there, I say not. Is there any opposition? Ma'am, I'm sorry.
I know you brought the construction group, but that's a legitimate issue. These are both problems. And they're out there working, who are concrete?
I'm gonna, I'm, I got three different in the morning. I'll talk to him. I'll talk to him about it. We have to go do some things. Okay.
Only one thing that you might do is call Randy and, um, she might be lining that up for you. Do you have her number?
I'll just start with her, either guy. I will get it.
Seven one nine fourteen ninety-seven.
Fourteen ninety-seven. Thank you. I'll call her. Yes, yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll talk with you about a week before. Okay, thank you so much. The next item on the agenda, uh, the, uh, feasible study that the council have, you only, I'm just gonna take yours up today. You only more time to look at them so we can make a real decision as to, uh, how we're gonna handle that.
Well, what do you, uh, how do you feel about what you read? I mean, I read it briefly today. And, um, this may seem a bit biggy, but in their, uh, study, they call it a city of Clinton, Louisiana. We're the town of Clinton.
Right, we get that a lot.
Well.
Lots of changes.
It's a formal contract. Holly, Miss Holly.
Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all's time. Mr. Griffin, I'll get you a copy of it. You got a copy, okay. But you need time to look at it.
Call number three, that should be addressed properly. But, okay, it's only going to be forty-three hundred dollars?
That's just the study. That's just the study. That's just the study.
What are they gonna study?
Whether the meters are reading property knowledge, maybe losing something effectiveness of your.
We don't need to know that. Forty-three hundred dollars. Call one of them other towns and see what they get.
But they're reading, they not getting the same as you was at. You know, that's, that was probably what you tell me. That you want to see it's efficient, what it's worth, obviously. It's certainly more. This is what it's worth, not purchasing, not getting the knowledge. They show you losing revenue while the meters not reading correctly.
So they're just gonna go out and evaluate meters at random?
Probably, probably ten samples.
Okay. Because I know the videos say something about, um, maybe thirty meters around. And, um, that, the purpose of that is to show y'all.
The conveyor.
Yes.
That's yours and theirs and show, show.
We're not, we're not push or force to act, but the council to act now. I just want to make sure y'all got that, a copy of the feasibility study. We can always, you know, whether we decide to do it, if you don't need more time.
So they would have to do the feasibility study first.
Before they do anything, yes, sir.
Has anybody had the opportunity to contact, let's say, West Monroe or wherever those other towns, Tipperoe?
I think there's one. To talk to, no, no.
To see if, what they think of these people and has it helped? Independent? Russellville, Arkansas, Flat Springs. Would y'all have the opportunity to call these people?
We can. So you can, that's a trial, they'll just let them do that?
Maybe. Start, start to lose a ball there and then get a chance to, um, read it and then get Charles a chance to read, see what he says.
Okay, so we can do that. So we don't, we don't need to take any action. As far as this study right now, we'll just wait to hear from you, Mr. Griffin. I'll make some calls, Miss Angie. I'm making, I'll make some calls to those, because that's what we've done this, we've been before and let's see what's up. And I'll report back to the council, um, next meeting.
And this, this deal with the district, biking for ninety, ninety bucks an hour, I mean, that, if the town gonna take care of the head of the place ready for the swap meter, that, that's what that's made. Charge you ninety bucks an hour, if they had to come and cut, we got the way, uh, some concrete around the meter or something like that. You know, the town don't have a meter ready to replace. That's, you know, on this, uh, base sixteen.
Lighting chair.
And there's any concern about that, but that's, I don't just got everything ready to change the meter out there. I don't really worry about that either.
But do they know if our billing system is, um, they obtain all the information they need? Yeah.
Oh, I think they were saying that, yes, you knew how it was, all the same relatives.
How the, honey, the gearing system is up to date with all updates and all that.
Yes, sir.
Village Wilson's actually gonna redo their meters.
With these people?
They're trying to get their long ones set up right now and I think they're gonna move on.
Do they go through the feasibility study?
Their meters are like forty years old. I don't think they have a choice.
They don't have as many meters as we have.
I would have got a hundred and three meters. And that might be a good get dig.
I think they're, you know, they have the ability to do a lot of this remotely, to where you don't have to, or you want to alleviate the chances of meter errors. Just from, um, customers, an ability to, uh, shut it off.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody know how old our meters are?
Love the gig with Amanda.
Because Tim just said Wilson's are forty, forty. How old are ours?
The meter says I've been here, I've been here ten years.
Well, I've had, I've had thirty-four years and I've got the same meter.
My mother's meter's been there at least fifty or sixty years now. These other meters, I mean, surprise, we start reading, make a ride.
That's exactly.
If you can find this, it's.
Hey, Paul, Mr. Kim, I'm sorry, they write those things down. Uh, so you would do that and I'll come back to the council and let's talk and have some answers. Those items that you, uh, had, what's the question?
To address the clogged drains, we have drains on the main, I mean, on the state highways. And I was riding around, down here by the, um, of the D A's office. And, um, and I just noticed that, um, there's grass that's clogging the drain. Now, you know, how well does the water get in it? I mean, flow through? I have no idea. But, you know. And then, um, over here by the courthouse, now I don't know if that's the town of Clinton issue or if that's not a state highway. But on the back side, the back left side of the courthouse is a drain, um, that's needs attention. Now, I was just thinking, maybe, um, the ones that are on state highways, are they responsible for cleaning the drains? I don't know.
Well, the outside by the woman, Wilson Church, you gotta be a stick to clean it out. It was, it was stopped up, it's digging the drain, the drain all the way through.
Well, I think if, if the drains are there, we need to be utilizing for what purpose.
Where, where are those drains, the market, name in particular?
But, uh, well, this plain, I cleaned it out the other day. But there's one on Woodville Street behind, uh, Portis, Mrs. Portis, where it was grass there. And I think there's one less, uh, at the corner of, uh, Old South and, uh, what, what catfish little, okay.
Oh, Taylor and, um, Oak Street.
They're going to Oak.
That's it.
Okay, was, it'd be, yeah, but it, it, but you can't see it, but it's going there somewhere, you know.
Well, well, not, 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 not an excuse, but as far as drains, uh, maintenance department, uh, they started cleaning out ditches. Uh, and they were going in certain areas, like people would call and I would send them to that area, whoever, Miss Angie, Michelle would send them to certain areas. The. The machine.
Yeah.
Um, the bottom belt, something broke. They repaired that. They started cleaning out more ditches than the top broke. The top belt or something broke. But, uh.
Plus these drains are not going to the ditch, this is going through the pipes that are on the ground.
Um, there's others.
I'll address that with Mr. Harold.
On Old South, I mean, uh, Old Drive, there's more along that too, by the, by the Ferris, isn't there?
Maybe they just go make the, um, the parade off of it and take your lane.
Okay.
Carol Kim?
Yes. I have a neighbor who has called the state repeatedly about Plank Road, um, grids that are totally clogged. Is that their responsibility? Why, why don't they respond? Does anybody know? That's the state, that, that's, is that the state of, that's the town. I mean, that's the state's responsibility.
They have a, um, station out here on Liberty Road.
Another car, car, we had the lead over there.
I was sending a certified letter, since any doubt that you got it.
Is that the state or is that the town?
That's state.
Plank Road from the intersection of Ten and Sixty-Seven South is state?
Oh, every road comes through here, the state road, main road is Ten and Sixty-Seven.
So, but there's issues with Highway Ten going out town, right there by the D A's office. I mean, that's a state highway. And then also going to Greensburg.
So the state is truly their job.
Well, no, but maybe with all these people that are up here, well, that's, that's, um, that's a lot of. But do you think a letter from you, certified letter might help? Because to me, a certified letter lets them know that you know that they received it.
I think like, I think you get more work out of it if you get some public fish, you know, that's, that's who make the act.
I hope we got those Kenny Abner for that.
I'll call him now.
Quinn's nice. Okay, um. One was, oh, the sound of the annual audit, has it been completed?
You, you answered it in your report, doing your, your.
Am I jumping the gun?
No.
No, no, she, uh, Matt hired you, accountant, and he has been, basically, he started all over scratch again. He's come to Angie, I think, today, yesterday, and he's refilling everything, going back over all the numbers and everything, so.
This is to get his financials that he needs?
Well, it's, he's just going back over the reports. All the reports are created, all the invoices were pulled and everything, and now he's, I guess he's just, they're doing, coming back for another look through it.
Are they gonna be able to make the deadline? Which is, for the month?
I think we're in grace period right now.
Uh, Max said he.
Yeah, we're, we're in the grace period right now, I think.
Just take us down and shit into any trouble.
Yeah, he, Max said he think that, uh, when he got that trial balance and all that, and he came over and said.
Yeah, they got all the numbers.
Yeah, all the numbers, everything's there.
I think they're just going back, the less I've heard, yeah, verified, the less I've heard, very, very, you know, fronting on people, all it's, um, Max is covering his next shore in front of.
I just don't want anybody to forget.
Oh, no. We meet with the guy in the morning, actually.
Okay, uh, the other thing I had, and I brought this up before, and I think it's important for new people moving in or for people just coming through Clinton. And then they see, well, they don't even care about their own property. But the property down where the old fire department was, there is actually a pine tree growing out of the gutter. And then there's all kind of debris growing out of the, the front, no, not the pine trees on the back side. And, um, the area around the old water well, which I think is unique and is attractive and all that stuff, it's all growing up. I don't understand why we can't tidy up. And I know it can't be done in a day, but I don't think anybody's thinking about it.
Again, I thought, an excuse, but it depends. This Saturday I had some guys come out and stuff on the back behind the, uh, uh, maintenance shop. That they cleaned up back there, but I will go a bunch more in that debris and have it built up.
Well, in between the.
In between the building and metal building, one of the churches.
Yeah, in between the building, the actual building and the old pump station, uh, there's lots of vines and stuff growing. But, you know, people coming into town or, I mean, it bothers me not, but if somebody's wanting to move here and they see that the town, they didn't care about their own property, just think that's a bad reflection.
They, they don't have the ladder.
Well, I talked to a friend of mine who has a lift truck. And I asked him if he ever, uh, somebody could ask him to give a blow or whatever. I don't know if the town has the money to do it, but whatever. But he said he never looked at the back side of the building. And, um, and I might could get him to be very generous with his feet and, um.
On the front, you could lift, use a man lift because it's concrete, but you couldn't do it on the back.
Yeah, and I was talking to, um, Bill Ford today. He needs to thank you so much.
Bill did do it. Uh, we had, we, we tried to do it one time, but it, the ladder would, you had to leave it on the end.
What about, you know, what about one of those things like roofers use that you attach to your ladder and it's support, huh?
My.
No, 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 and it's supported on the roof. Can that work? I need, I have a, and I buy one and dominate it, but I'm not gonna accept it while I go, if anybody follows. But, um, and I have a five by eight ladder that probably will reach that height and I'm not gonna show how tall that is.
It's about sixty-three.
I don't know, I just think it's important that we, you know, sweep up, have our front doors and back doors.
Well, that, that gentleman that you said, you know, that could possibly, whatever, be, would you, uh, contacting him and calling this angel tomorrow, whenever you're gonna go to the city?
Okay.
Saying you have one. Was there any problems at all?
Uh, while we're complaining, uh, I'm not really complaining, but, uh, this is a residential street. But Old South Drive picks up highway traffic and it go all the way through. There's a railing on that dangerous curve. A woman has been killed in that, in an accident in that curve. In my time there, there had been three accidents there. Uh, there've been children played down in that ditch. That wooden railing is no longer even a railing, it's collapsed.
Is that by?
That's a tremendous strain. It's, it's dangerous for the cars coming around it. And I noticed two children in the neighborhood who are continually going over there. Uh, it's grown up, except that inter, she very kindly came through and sprayed the whole street with orange red, whatever, Asian orange. And so it got rid of the paint that was falling over. But, um, I don't think it would be terribly expensive. It's not a bridge, is it?
Is that on, you said that's on Old South?
Old South Drive. And there is a lot of traffic that takes that street particularly now with the construction going on, um.
But when they overlaid the street, that wasn't part of the project to put a rail there?
Oh, no, I don't think so. No, it's really ragged. I mean, pieces of wood falling off. Um, it just looks like it could go and push pulp in there. Um, I think, I don't know what you would need, but that wood.
Is it one side or one side?
It's just one side. It's not a bridge, um.
Must be the left side going through your house.
It's on the white side, and it's next to rock.
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
It's a. It's just rocks.
Is there one on the left side?
Yes, that's been replaced and it's, it's, uh, metal. But, um, yeah, a car will have no trouble, it's not right there.
The kids are riding the ice house too.
Yeah.
Because of the overgrown, I almost hit one.
Yeah, I've seen, I've noticed the gangs that will lean over.
Okay. I don't know if they addressed.
It can be addressed, that's great.
Oh, the other thing I had was blighted properties in Clinton. What can we do?
Well, I can go address it now. I was gonna do it somewhere else.
And then, um, the last thing I had was under hope is, is the status of the public meeting. With DOTD or Representative Kenny Haver, if we ever able to get anything going.
No, no, go ahead, Mr. Trump.
All the message. No, all of it for Kenny with Dunham.
Do you feel we still need one?
I mean, I.
I mean, they're well into their project.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not, I think what it is is, it's fine and it's acceptable, it's, I mean, it is what it is, you know? Hopefully it don't look nice or, you know. Things will be better, I know right now it's not so great looking, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's under construction.
Right. But I think it, you know, I think since we got the railing taken away, Britain has a handicap, you know. Deal there and, um, landlord because they're barking, um, I don't know, but I think no one else has said anything. I've asked Miss Deal over at, uh, Nishana Fashion, she said she really doesn't have anything. I think people have kind of addressed it. I don't know, personally have addressed it, I don't know if there are other issues on the table. I haven't heard anything, but I've been out of town too, so.
Well, when the last meeting we had and they were showing the map of it, it looked nice.
Yes.
You know, it's not as bad.
Yeah, I think it's not. I have to meet with, um, uh, already down as far as the lighting, the pole, um. Pole that they had and the plans to put up there was just a two by four, um, tree pole that's.
A light pole?
Yeah, not acceptable. One was gonna be, something's gonna be on Church Street. One almost by the gazebo and then across the street, but both, both those three areas, they were not good areas. We, uh.
This favor?
Just, just, just sitting there with nothing around to keep from me running over and whoever running over like. But anyway, I'm gonna meet with them tomorrow as far as permanent electricity, but I'm Mr. Larry.
But there's a light pole right there at the corner church and the main street.
Uh, they won't, they won't. She said no, so that's why.
But they got a light?
They gotta have those lights too, but this shit's a light that's gonna eliminate the, um, same social security, but we can't do it back then.
Only one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the tree, uh, I'm not really sure, cause I don't really have like channel that, the pond guy. Is there gonna be, um, what do they call it, a crepe mull maybe? Is that going in front of, um, what Charlie's old place, um, Jason and Nineties? Where our Britney is?
I don't know, but I meet with them tomorrow because they're setting up a box. I mean, you can, you can go with me to meet, if you want to, you can go with me. There's gonna be some type of box they're putting up and there's some. I have the things in my box. Something, so we're gonna talk about that.
No, I think there's new stuff in different spots, but I just think that it's in front of her window and she was interested to.
I hope they were doing it in ground with a grate around it.
They are, they're doing those too.
What's the box?
It's something over there, kind of like, something over there by, uh, what I think she was explaining to me today. Anyway, we got to talk about.
Well, they were talking about the matches lighting, or I don't know if that may be redundant, but the matches, right, are using those. Is what someone said and then somewhere in, when they did the impairment and that. But when they did the plan for, or got the grant for the street sidewalks years ago. It wasn't matches that was supposed to grow on, it was another, was native to, um, Louisiana County.
You mean it wasn't a crepe mull?
It was a crepe mull, but it wasn't matches.
Carol surely told me that I understood that they recommended something else, more colorful. And the person who was the expert that was there that day said, don't put a bunch of colors, use the matches white. That was my understanding.
So that's quite a bit cleaned up around those trees occasionally.
Maintenance creates a horrible mess. We created, and I have to say, we created a problem on Lyric Drive by putting those crepe murals there because, um. But they, they're multiple tramped many times and they have to be pruned a certain way and people think it's going in. You just chop them off, then you have to remove them and the tree removes, it's expensive.
Yeah. I hate it when they chop them off like, stare at it. That's, you know, it's just murder.
Okay. Let's move on, the next item on the agenda, Chief Dunn, Mr. Paul.
All right, Paul, Mr. Paul, the report for August, I tasted this in fifty-five, powers made sixteen. Arrest seven, summons two, verdict zero. Outstanding warrants, you see, they're going up, we're getting ready to do a homicide control. Twelve thirteen K fraud, this is the attorney himself. Now, the rare, uh, vote out, when you see I put the letter in your packet. Due to the meeting we had here in reference to Saint Helene Street with the tower we're tearing. With the wiring, some of the business owners were concerned about the trucks and the speed. And so we drafted the letter that sent to them to, uh, top the commission and they told me to submit the letter. And with the, uh, board out and approval and recommendation to them, they were allowed us to drop that speed. Seeing the letter I put in there from, from twenty-five to fifteen to twenty miles when I was starting that. Spring Street, which is right up behind, uh, James and right across from the old, uh, jail, all the way up to Old Street.
Did y'all think about, um. Plank Road, cause we were talking at that last meeting, um, like from Valero's coming in, maybe reducing the speed there?
I talked to them there, they said regarding the housing like, they recommend the speed safety sign.
Maybe it's like a visible unit.
And that's what I told them, I said, well, can you send somebody up? They told me to just go ahead and submit this. And, uh, they were sending somebody up, once they hit this, then somebody can build a study right there at their life. So I just, they're just a little bit after we can sit in, they told us the possibility to get them through is one hundred percent. We just have to submit it. They said the local body just have to agree to.
I'm sorry, I couldn't apply that same. You're gonna need one time today or we need.
No, I just gave it to them, uh, I have to have it tuned before, uh, end of this month.
And I think I'll fly. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Chief Dunn. Are they going to have, uh, red flashing lights on all four? When all the Mrs. People that are coming from the south are assuming that the eastbound or westbound traffic. Has a red stop sign or a flashing light. I almost broadsided a person who made that assumption, I think, pulling through. So that, that's just a consumer's.
I think the state has always said that, or, uh, that we don't have enough traffic from our end to put a light.
Red light.
Yeah, I, I can see that, but you're just making me, something, if they have a flashing red light, so do, so does east west. And we don't, I think it's flashing yellows.
How, how, how we, how we did, uh, Saint Helene got the flashing yellow means cost them so damn.
Right.
The, the, uh, sixty-seven has, actually has a rail, they have to stop.
And they do, but they have.
Yeah.
You get it.
I talked about putting the four-way stop there, but they, they don't have much sense to operate a four-way stop. For a four D goes into a single lane.
Anything else, Chief? That's it, okay. Thank you.
Do we need to sign this one?
The job I have to do is approve for me to activate.
Cause then you're gonna need our signature.
Yes. Um, hey, do you all wanna go ahead and approve that now? About need to get a motion to have it approved now to send it to the State Department? It has been motioned by Alden of Johnny Beach. Second by Alden Camion. As a letter drafted by Chief Dunn to the State Department will be sent in in reference to reducing the speed on Saint Helene Street. Are you ready to vote? Alden came with a say aye. Is there any opposition? I said the motion is clear, thank you, Chief. Okay, uh, Mr. Beach.
Hey, Bill Alden, um, we've been fortunate, the last few months we haven't been really, really busy, uh. And we seem to have dodged the bullets for the, from the hurricanes. Uh, but we did meet with Homeland Security and we were prepared for the eventuality. Uh, we last, well, last year about this time, I think last October, uh, we bought a boat. And, uh, it's pretty much completely outfitted now. We have everything we need, we'd leave for it if we have any more, uh, water rescues needed. Particularly the town Clinton and things like that, it's a, it's a, um. It's a rescue boat, it's not just a vato that we put a motor on, it's a rescue boat that we, there's made specifically for that. So it is, uh, ready to go. Also, um, I met with the, I guess it's the foreman or whoever for the, the construction downtown. The guy here, I forget his name, uh, also with, uh, maintenance supervisor. Uh, about moving two hydrants and where we're gonna place them, two hydrants have to be moved. And, uh, so we're gonna move, uh, the one that is on the corner of, uh, Plank Road and, and Highway 10. At that corner, we're gonna move it east about, about forty feet or so, forty, maybe fifty feet up the hill a little bit. And, um, we all agreed that, that would be a good, good spot for it, rather than trying to cross the intersection and go with Valero's corner or something like that. We're gonna do that. The one that's set in front of the clerk and courts office, we're gonna move it to the corner of the, the bank on that, across the street. Corner of the bank drive in, it's kind of an area there. So it'll still be in the same general area. But it's gotta be moved, that's determining one. So that, cause we have to have those two hydrants, two of our major hydrants that we would use downtown.
And that one across from Mr. Oscar Wethel, building. You know one there?
Yeah, it's one that, the road's not gonna affect what they do. And as I said, we've been fairly, uh, fairly quiet till this past weekend. We had a couple of minor fires, had one, the nine one one office with a bit fan, uh. That, uh, they're calling fire. And then we had a little stove fire down in a hill crest subdivision. Then we responded to the, uh, fatality up on Perouth Road, uh, the other night. I guess that was Sat- Saturday night, Saturday night, anyways, responded to that too.
Is that when they air made or something like that?
We air made, actually two, we had one Thursday night that was from, um. Another, it wasn't in our district, but they came here, came to our department too.
About Sunday.
And then Sunday was a motorcycle wreck, uh, we responded to, uh, just up sixty-three, about, not even a quarter of a mile up there. And we air made again that.
Uh, let me ask you this, up at the rail, up there by my house, there's a low fire truck.
Should be two.
Well, okay, it might be up in the bush. We, uh, y'all could do it together, can't it?
This is town's property, uh, I told the town a few years ago that this town's property, they can sub or scrap or, or bid it out to, you know. Motors are still good, they're some nice motors, they work when we park them there. And, uh.
Was that the rail that pumps and all that on?
Pump and all that, uh, if, they, pumping all that worked fine when we took them out of service. The, they were actually too old, too unreliable, the brakes, the clutch and things like that, just wasn't, it wasn't worth putting a lot of money to get those things fixed.
Don't we need to?
But it's a town's, it's a town's problem.
Each, oh, y'all not getting insurance on those anymore?
No, 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 sure. Town didn't care insurance on anything.
Why can't we scrap them? Give you dollars, put them in something, I mean, they're just.
Just the motors, the motors are still probably pretty good, you know, somebody may be interested in, in the motors.
But you're sitting up all that for me? They got to wear a ton.
Some scrap dog. What kind of? Ford, I think both of them are Fords.
While we're talking about fire, I know, we get them, uh.
These ones.
Like we got no fire, we got a few, can't they be replaced, cause I mean, they're buried, does anybody know?
I don't know, we'll find out, we just ordered, how many of them came in? Uh, I have two.
That's not enough, is it?
We, we need four, we have three, we try to keep more for emergency purposes.
Well, that one up there by Barrett Smith up on top of Cowboy Hill or Old South Drive, that's the one, but it's got a, you can take a bath over there, cause of the drips coming out of it. It's continual. Up there, up the hill from your house, Kelly. Water going all down the street.
Yes, ma'am. The old fire trucks that Mr. Beach and Mr. Kent was talking about, can we, uh, if, like, uh, restore it for a whole, he's anti-piece of town or something?
We had, in fact, we, speaking of that, we have a fire truck, uh, hope it's back there, it shouldn't be gone.
It's back there.
On two fifty-two that we planned to restore sometime, so.
Behind the old fire.
Behind the old fire department, we're gonna come up and get it and, and move it. We were gonna check the DCI in, or Angola, but the political climate wasn't really right at the time in Angola. We're asking for favors, so, uh, we didn't do it, uh, but we went. They're red ones in nineteen fifty-two, now that would be pretty good, those others probably wouldn't make a flatter out of them, that's about it.
That's it, Mr. Beach, thank you, sir.
But do we need to put that on next month's agenda about scrapping them or what? Cause we didn't vote to add to the agenda.
We can put it on next agenda. So did you make note of that?
You put, you had, need to declare it as circumpro property, and, yeah, that would actually be it.
Thank you, Mr. Beach. Uh, maintenance department, you reported in your packet, uh, Mr. Butler.
We, we got caught up with the financials, so we were ready to produce a financial this morning. One big thing to note, if you look at the first page of the general fund, uh, Miss Angie was able to collect that seventy-eight thousand dollars from the railroad companies. So that got our property tax, we only fifty-seven hundred dollars owed in property tax, total, as of this point right now, so that was a big, a big man. Was much, much. Now, I cheated a little bit, the money didn't get put in the bank until September, but I wanted it. I want the state funding that on the procedural.
How did you collect it, Angie?
I kept calling. Miss Angie, go ahead, tell them about the other people you've called to, because I have also contacted, uh, what is it, uh, Baby's cable. They owe us for the last year, all the last year, and the third quarter at the end of this year, they owe us for all this year. So I talked to, um, this, uh, baby this morning and she says she's working on, we should have our money by next week.
So, yeah, I think I should actually go ahead and just talk to him.
That being said, the, the general fund's down a little bit right now, but. Down to a year, about fifty-nine dollars, but you had that seventy-eight to it, we're, we're just a little bit over, over some basic line. So, um, we're right on about, I didn't print out the, I forgot to print the, our own, uh, actual budget. But we're right about where we need to be on the budget, we're running by the law, about right where we should be. Our income and expenses both. Uh, the other piece, while we, we lost so much money in August was all the insurances came due. The other piece, while we lost so much money in August was all the insurances came due. So there were a lot of insurance renewals and everything that came in. So that kind of took a hard hit for them off. The sales tax fund, it's continuing to grow, grow back again. Again, the big overlay project cost about $240,000. So that's why it's in a hole, 211 for the year.
We haven't collected anything.
Not that, I'm trying. I, you know, the guy again today, but I didn't get a response. We sent him all the people working, they put it in and he said he was, you know, last month I talked to him, but I called it back today, but I didn't respond. But I'm saying on top of that also.
Tell me you got five bills for the papers.
He actually came here and worked with this angel. He drove up and worked it, so we know that that thing is there just a matter of.
They all, they're going down a lot.
Some checks, so it's on everybody.
And on the utilities, do you collect 48,000?
Yes, now the utility, 20 of that is shut off. 28 of that is current due. That's still, like I say, due this month. 20 is a big lack, 20 is old stuff on the shut off list.
And we also sent letters out to some of the ones who have, have like old bills and they're getting to like December.
And somebody called.
Took part of the date and paid everything in December, in early December.
Y'all gonna send them?
December, and trying to try to run the same. It's not much.
Well, yeah. Now, if y'all shut somebody off, do y'all go back randomly to check to make sure that the meter's still off?
Well, when you shut it off, it's supposed to be putting meter locks in the meters. And I think they say we was short on locks, I'm correct?
Yes.
We was short on locks, so we have to go back and order some more.
And even sometimes, we've had some customers, we lock them out and they actually cut the locks.
Yeah, they cut the locks.
They cut them.
Were they arrested?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So we don't have to be afraid.
Now, if I had to put on bulletproof plastic, I would do all that.
They actually told the mayor that they cut it back on.
They told me.
Went out there and got saved from the wheel.
Somebody told me or suggested to me, well, I'll just get my services in another name. Which I remember.
No, we heard that too. And it so happened, Ms. Ross, he's out there, Ms. Hicks was here when that statement was made and he heard that, he said, well, okay, may I have a suggestion? If they say that, if they turn it off, say they no longer there, they live in a house and just ask them to show your books, say, they sold the house.
Well, if I were, let's say I did that and I had my sister to come back behind me and want to put utilities in her name to get it reestablished, would she have to prove that she owns the property or that she's staying there? Would maybe you jump, oh, no, you jump, let's go, energy bill.
And not on the debt, or you say, for instance, he won his, cut off, he owes the balance. If they're going to that same address and that balance he paid you.
That's supposed to be pretty cool.
Supposedly is. Is he absolutely positive?
Well, she's, she held on, so she's, she's been, she's been.
I mean, Clinton's so small, you know what's going on. Or lose who and if they actually moved or what have you. We just got to be smarter than the residents.
That's it, Mr. Butler?
That's it, any questions?
Any questions? Public comment?
I have one question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
When do we anticipate the mowing will start again in town?
Actually, we stopped today. They were mowing today out in town, but Mr. De Lee call. Somehow we inherited the cemetery and it's a monster to cut. And there are some people coming in from the State Department on tomorrow. They came in during, what, what was it? Labor Day, what? Fun holiday, they came in and it was just all gone and it just didn't look good.
How did we inherit it?
I don't know how we inherited, but we did.
Oh, they be talking about the federal.
The cemetery, I don't know how that happened, but they won't cut it for them. The legislature won't cut it anymore.
I'm scared they could, we don't know.
Well, one thing that you might consider doing is contacting, once again, Jeff Travis to see if he can get some of the Clinton Hilton residents to help you.
They used to cut it, they used to cut it. But they just stopped, they used to cut it.
But I think so because you paid.
They used to cut it, but something happened, they were having something and they couldn't cut it. We went to help them to cut it. And after we helped them to cut it, then they stopped cutting.
But maybe even DCI.
Maybe. But they just stopped, they stopped cutting today, Dr. Wells, they stopped today to go and cut that as a favor for the, for Mrs. De Lee.
I'm sorry, but the equipment is working.
Yes, exactly. It looks wonderful, the habitat, the streets cut in. We were getting that jungle, South American, yes, we were, it's like Argentina.
Scott, that was down here on Wilson, I mean, oh, Wilson Run, I guess is the extension of us behind, uh, Lawrence Run, going out towards, let's say, Dewey Spirits House. Those ditches are horrible.
Yes, they are. Yes, ma'am.
Couldn't keep these Felicia up beautiful, get on the agenda for next time.
Is that my standing for the next?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one other question. I've gotten on this, it's a picture, last year, some information about junk in general and litter and things like that. And I want to know, is there anything that can be done? Cause there are laws in place, ordinances about the, as you're coming into Clinton or as you're leaving, on the right-hand side, there's four junk cars. Now, they're parked neatly, but now the grass is this high. It's just a lot of junk right there. What can be done, if anything?
What's free to do?
Fence.
A big fence.
A big tent.
That's.
It's really bad.
Yeah, we, we'll take it.
Okay, I can, I can address that. That's what, if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and address that with the black that you were talking about earlier.
Well, there is an ordinance about.
Yes.
Junk cars and stuff. And it's not just that house. There's one coming in on the other, some girl on leggings that night.
Uh, there's someone on South Drive that have been there so long, the trees are growing through it. Yeah, the blue house on the hill. Yeah, we tried to go up in there, let them get. Well, I think that one, and one across the street from it, that property.
Yeah, what is that?
With all the equipment on it and.
You know about that door?
The vehicle complete will fly.
You're not talking about that truck that's long.
The truck is in the angle in the air and all weeds.
What's with the four trucks?
Okay, I have, I actually have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I have thirty-seven on my list.
Thirty-seven.
That's, that's on the, it's not the light, it's light problems.
Well, the problem with Highway 10 is that's when you're coming into town. It's so, I cannot tell you many people who say, oh, this looks so bad. It just looks, well, gives you a bad impression.
That, and then you catch the barbed wire over the DA's office. And that's not a good impression of coming into a little town to get both of those things at once. But while I have four, I meant, ask you this. The contractors that are doing the town have bought, purchased or leased that property across from Valero, right? Bought it?
They bought, I understand.
They're responsible for the, for the lot itself, aren't they?
Half of the lot.
Half of the lot facing the highway is deplorable when you're coming in. How many cars come through that intersection?
Well, they're supposed to be taking that log down and putting that.
Why can't they just take a weedy, we too could get a weedy, the boards there and cut all that stuff that's falling over the wall. And you're making a right turn there. It, it looks, I know it's just an equipment site right now, that's probably what they would say. But I think it's their responsibility to get rid of some of that stuff that's.
They might have asked them to, if they would just cut it.
It's not a big deal.
You think you broke horns or?
Yeah, they did.
They bought half of it when I was. And that was why it looks so bad now. They've done nothing since they bought it to take here the overgrown on the main.
Do you have this poison down there? Do you have any poison? We have.
Yes, yes. Please not orange, it's not a big orange.
You killed one, you killed one. You know, you must have.
I get stuff.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. I have a little something I wanted to say about the blighted property and I read it up and Mayor and I have been talking together, trying to see what we can do. I wanted to express concern about the blighted property mainly on St. Helena and Plank Road. Those are our major arteries, 67 and 10. So those are the places I'm focusing on and a couple of other places in town. I don't have nearly as many as you do. That's, those are the streets that the world sees. That's how they see Clinton, those two streets right there. So we feel like that they should be our primary focus. Question, did you know that tourism is the fastest growing industry in the world? I got this from the newspaper. And that nature-based tourism is the fastest growing component of that industry. Well, this is, this is what I'm thinking anyway. We have nature and lots of it. We have a rich history, we have wonderful places to visit right here in Clinton and we could benefit from this explosion in tourism. If we made a potential effort to clean up our towns, a good place to start would be the blighted property. It's not good for our town because Mr. Griffin would probably agree with this. It's a real liability. So many places have sat for so long, we all pass it, it's a liability. It is a, an endanger to public welfare. Studies have proven that it contributes to crime. I know of two cases where people are, were living in these vacant houses right here in town. It lowers your property value and most importantly, it's a health hazard because these places are seriously messed up and it creates vermin. I found chapter 16 in our ordinance book on nuisances. There are, there's a general section, there's a junk vehicle section, there's a weeds section and a condemnation of buildings section. It's not real simple. They're all slightly different. So it's going to take an effort to do this, but I'd like to share some photos that I went to the truck to get. And I hope they'll help clarify the point, the points that I'm trying to make here. And I'd like to discuss each one. The first one is the one that when we come into town, it's the old Miller Funeral Home. I don't have an address and don't, don't hold me to these addresses. But the Miller Funeral Home is a burned out building right by the Welcome to Clinton sign. And I've seen it so much that I really, I quit thinking about it. But when you think that's the introduction to our town, Dick. So first picture on the other left, down below it is right on St. Helena, on the same side, closer to town. And that one, I'm just going to say the, going back to the Miller Funeral Home is owned by someone that the mayor has spoken to.
Yes, I spoke to her, she, Ms. Brown. She lives in Greensburg. She received a certain kind of letter and she's, she's one of the miss to come to Mayor's Court because when she got her letter, what she did, she put the other building down at the time. She cleaned around it, but it's grown back up, so she will be getting her letter.
The one below it is on St. Helena and I'm just going to be honest with y'all. It's owned by, I think it's by Billy Joe and Joan Bussey. Where is this at?
Right next to where Johnny's.
I think I've got the, the numbers right, I'm not certain.
On the left.
But it's right next door.
The fire hydrant?
Right next to where Johnny Beach was raised.
That's the building, that he had and his kids got it.
That's on the same side with the fire hydrant is, is that same side? I spoke to that lady, I spoke to her, I forgot her name, she called because she, I thought she was.
That property, she used to be kept fairly clean and you could see the fence and you could see the house and that's all you can see now, is the peak of the building. Okay, the next one is further down on St. Helena, but the dress is actually Bank Street. And it's, you know where the courthouse restaurant is? Can we find them?
Oh, yeah, there's a process, there's, there's a big.
I mean, like these people who have taken over or have been here to that house, we'll find them, we keep finding them, we keep finding them.
This, this ordinance, we have to go by this ordinance. And we have.
So there's no lien in that property?
Yeah, there's everything in here, yeah. And, and there's a process that the mayor knows is slightly different from everything. But I just want to create awareness for y'all.
The next one is behind the courthouse restaurant, it is a lot. Usually it doesn't look that good. Usually it's about waist-high, 99% of the time. That's where the cause always.
No.
No. It's more vacant, that fence is overgrown usually, weeds in front of it are overgrown. And this is excellent, the way it looks right now. That is an eyesore and I believe that's owned by the people that own the store. It's listed as Graham and by Graham's, I guess, inheritance. And it's listed on Bank Street. So the store and that property goes together. I don't know why. Down below that is the property that is right adjacent to that, across the street, same side, north side. And that is also St. Helena Street, but it's listed as Montgomery Street because it faces that side street. And that's a picture of the junk cars. And then further over, of course, we all know there's a silver trailer and abandoned. I mean, talk about.
That's where it's getting.
Snakes. You can get to it because it's some overgrown now. Next page is Plank Road, this is down the other artery, Plank Road. First house is called the Freeland House, that is owned by Christopher and Dr. Cosay and Zachary, can't think of her first name. It's, I think every one of these is abandoned. I don't think that, none of these are lived in that I see. This one is totally abandoned, people were living in there. The one below it is on Plank Road, it's a lot of property. And that's just a picture of the side building. I just was too scared to go up any further. And that is, that's a lot of property, again, abandoned.
That's Harmony Hill.
Harmony Hill.
Kindergarten.
That's right. It's so, it was so special to so many people and it's just so sad. Oak drive, this is the Owens cleaner, that property by the side. I guess the state mowed some of it, so that looks better. Usually it's atrocious. Who owns that? I don't know who owns that, does anyone know?
I think it's a family out of Baton Rouge, maybe.
All these times.
Yeah.
Mr. Owens sold it, didn't he? He sold it, so they're probably out of town of Clinton. No, I'm saying Mr. Owens doesn't own it.
No, 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 he sold it to.
We can find out. So most of these people are not around here, they're from away. I don't know that they would even bother to come to a mayor's court, I don't know. Bottom one is Bank Street, that one is local, that is called Old Carol House. It's a historic property here. Actually, that looks pretty good compared to what it was. Most everything was growing up on the building and we all know what that looks like. And that is, that is a person too, is a single man who has family all in Baton Rouge. He doesn't stay, spent much time. I think he struggles to even keep that place going. And the last one, please don't fault me for that. Spent much time. I think he struggles to even keep that place going. And the last one, please don't fault me for that picture. That was the best I could do. It's on those South Drive. And, and again, it's one of those cases, this effect is something you cannot see the dwelling. I don't know who owns that. I don't know who it belongs to.
Leslie, Lagan, maybe if you give us a.
Yes, it, uh, it belongs to someone who was inherited to an institute.
Mike. Miss Sharon has her.
Oh, okay. And then someone lived in here and talked to Sharon. Because then your case out yet. They went in and never came out. And so we mentioned it to Sharon because we were so worried about what's going on.
So these are just abandoned properties?
For the most, these are the ones I targeted mainly. In most cases, they're on the arteries of the town. They're the ones that the world, when the world comes to Clinton, this is what they judge us by, our arteries look. And I'll be honest with you, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I, I didn't put some of the business down that should have been there. We have a Pats hardware that, you know, we use all the time. We love those people. You look at St. Francisville and you look in Central, it is no blade grass, it's out of place and there are fresh flowers planted, blooming flowers all the time.
And what about the shopping center?
And look at how they treat one. I don't understand. But this is the. That is a privately-owned business owned by Pat. Uh, Ben's is what I understand. So while two out of three can look good, I don't understand. But Mister, um, our attorney maybe should write, you know, I know the mayor's trying to write letters. I don't know if we've got much response, but maybe coming from an attorney would make more, um, of a difference.
If you go down and tear the house down and haul it off, I would just put a lien against it and they don't, they not gonna pay you money. And the town don't have money to tear them houses down and bring all that stuff up and show unless somebody pays for it.
Baker, there are other alternatives to that. So that's what we've always been told ever since I've been here, is that we don't have the money to address them. But I don't know that we really pursue the, uh, the complete legal avenues that we have. I'm just a worker being here, so I don't know. I'm just, I'll turn that over to Mayor Bell because, um, I just wanted to bring everybody's awareness. This is, you know, Jackson had a front-page article in the newspaper about cleaning their town up. And St. Francisville always looks good.
That's a little process.
I think we could improve if we put our hands together.
I want to thank you because I think you did a great job.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I understand, I don't know probably about this, but I understand that Baker, I don't know the details. Found a shortcut, legal shortcut to do this. And, uh, this was in the newspaper about six months ago. And they were having a special ride, getting rid of these properties. And they were not going through all this process. They found a legal shortcut to go through to get rid of them quickly. And I think other, um.
I'll call Mayor Wates.
Yes, I think there are other ways to do this other than step one, two, three, four. Right. They know that. We know that. There are other, we're, we're trying to push for other alternatives.
There are other.
I think that's what Baker was driving.
I'll call Mayor Wates.
Imagine if it's torn down and they could legally sell it for somebody to come in and sort of.
It's done in many places. Yes.
I only have two other things, um, uh, uh, to, uh, bring, uh, as far as, uh, before we, uh, adjourn. Some of, I know none of you have this, but what we're doing in the town of Clinton, we're gonna have a Fifty Shades of Pink, uh, breast cancer awareness event. It's gonna be September twenty-fourth at the Ark Barn. Gigi and I, we're doing this. Shani and I, we're doing this. And it's just to bring the awareness of breast cancer. And what we're gonna be doing, Susan Coleman, uh, someone from Susan, she could, she'll be here to speak.
Someone from Susan Coleman coming, um, a speaker that speaks about their journey through breast cancer. Um, and it kind of touches me because my father's had it, my grandmother's had it, my grandma's sister got it. So it's a big game. And so this awareness will be, uh.
So what we're doing, we actually are gonna start a chapter here in, uh, the town of Clinton. It was gonna actually be a hit at the door type thing, but we just wanna get the awareness out. This year, we're gonna start a chapter here. We're gonna raise funds and donate those monies, uh, to the Susan Coleman Breast Cancer, uh, Foundation, whatever. But, uh, what I'm asking, if there are someone, some of you here that want to, uh, France on the runway in pink, we're gonna have a fashion show. But you have to wear pink. We're gonna have Lynn here and I really, really, really would love to see some of your faces in there in pink. And support us with this. It's gonna be September twenty-fourth, Sunday evening at the Red Cross. And the only other thing I have, uh, can, uh, uh, quarterly staff meeting and what I did, I asked, uh, the police here at the town of Clinton, uh, last August during our time of, uh, you know, with the flood, uh, people came to us from here and yonder, far and away, to help us, uh, get back on our feet here. So we wanna give back. So you see those boxes there? Uh, we have collected money amongst ourselves. I have more monies. I need to pick up more supplies. And the chief is gonna coordinate, uh, a trip to go to either Houston or Florida and we're gonna deliver that. And, uh, we do have some surplus tissue, uh, toilet tissue that we got and baby care kits, uh, down there at the, uh, maintenance shop that we had. And they donated to us. And I'm just gonna share this brief. I know everybody needs to go. Uh, I, I also donated some things to the cause that was going to Houston, uh, from Baker. I took some things there. Maybe a couple of weeks, uh, before then, I'm setting it to engine. I said, I just gotta get this, this tissue stuff out of here. We have a eighteen-hundred-old tissue. I said, we gotta get all this stuff out. I'm, I, it just gotta go. And so when I was coming back up the road and, uh, what made me do this announcement in the meeting to ask them to give back, I'm just driving along and then, and God said, he spoke to me and he said, you know, I gave you a surplus because now is your time to give back. So if someone wants to give, donate to what we're doing here from the town of Clinton, you can do so. We are buying supplies from Dollar Tree, a doll, a item. If you wanna give, I don't know where we gotta be going. Chief, you don't even take the trip up there?
Probably next week, maybe another week after.
Okay, probably next weekend or the week after. Uh, we're just gonna give back from the town. So if anybody wants to give, um, a hand. But I do welcome some of you to come and talk to us. I'd like to see you on that runway on Sunday, September twenty-fourth.
Oh, Pink is, Pink is welcome.
And Mr. Kent, get with the chief. He's gonna be walking him to town. I'd like to see you to walk with him. Yes, sir.
He said, he said.
Those are the, Mr. Kent or Mr.?
Miss?
Mister, Mister Wayne.
Okay, that's all I have. But I guess if that's it, I will, uh. Getting the motion by Mr. Johnny, second by Kim. That we are joining the meeting. You ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor of saying I, I, I set the motion, scare.